Are you?
I guess. Okay, it's called a meeting to order. Thank you all for coming today. We have a forum. Stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott, before we get started today, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss and take action on the legal services contract and personnel matters discussed in the executive session and to appoint, to make appointments to the insurance and compensation committee committees and that we do that or we add that to the end of new business.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And we'll do that at the end of new business, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Next up here, approval of minutes of the December 30, January 8, and January 13, 2025 commissioners meetings. The actual, actually, the 13th, we're gonna table that one, right? Is, yeah. So after, we're gonna approve today, the, looking for approval on December 30 of 2024, January 8 of 2025 meetings.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same side? And I moved to table the January 13, 2025 meeting until it's properly typed up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Okay. Old business. We tabled the Boone County EDC last, in the last meeting, so... Looking for a motion to approve it?
Yeah, did you, I mean, you, did you have a chance to take a look at it?
Yeah, I did, I did get a chance to take a look at it. It's been pretty consumed, but I did, I did see the videos and, and look at, check it out as best I could in the short time from a one week, one week turnaround, so yes.
And Donnie and I did give feedback when the EDC asked for goals at their quarterly meeting. So I would make a motion that we approve that contract.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Okay. New business, legal issues, Mr. Clutter.
Uh, just one thing, we've got a maintenance bond for Jackson Run Southeast Section 2 storm sewer. A, it's a usual three-year maintenance bond in the amount of fifty-six thousand, fifteen dollars and twenty cents. And it has been approved by the surveyor's office and they recommend your adoption.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries.
That's all I have for legal issues. The next item, which is resolution issue 2025-01, authorizing the disposal of surplus property. I would just ask that you table that. Max and I were working on getting together a list and we haven't yet got that done yet, so.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
I move to, to table the resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Next up, TKE repair work for Max Mendenall.
Yeah, uh, on the disposal of equipment, that is, it's gonna be the, uh, old kitchen equipment coming out of the old kitchen jail. So, I'll get that list to you guys here shortly. Uh, yeah, so TKE, uh, so, TKE, we had a state inspector come in and our normal inspections, we have a couple of phones, three phones not working in our elevators, the emergency call phones. It's due to some, I think that our lines have been cut connecting the buildings together. Uh, our AT&amp;T lines, what we've done on the two new elevators at the jail is we went to a cellular option. And that's what this, this is with TKE. It's, uh, to be able to go to a cellular option with the five existing elevators that we have. One in this building, one in the courthouse, two at the Key Bank building. Sorry about that. And, um, then the existing at the jail. So the total to install that stuff, it will be thirteen thousand, eight thirty-six twenty-five. That's to purchase the equipment and have it installed. And then there isn't a, a maintenance fee that goes along with those as we go on.
You know what that fee is?
Uh, it's fifty-five dollars a, a unit, so it'd be roughly three hundred dollars a month. Um, and this is just to bring us up to code so that we do have emergency elevators, or emergency phones in our elevators, sorry.
Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Thank you.
Next up, BFS construction inspection for resurfacing project, Nick.
Uh, this is a hourly agreement for construction inspection services on our asphalt resurfacing project that has already been awarded. The funds have been awarded for community crossings. Uh, this is a typical process we go through on an annual basis, determine who our contractor is and what the extent of the inspection efforts are gonna be needed. So this project includes three miles of full-depth reclamation and 3.6 miles of resurfacing roadways. The total not to exceed of this agreement is an hourly not to exceed of a hundred and six thousand dollars. It's only billed as needed for those services. The total project is just short of three million dollars for all of the resurfacing. Getting about one point one million dollars worth of community crossings. This will be our annual resurfacing project that we do for our blacktop roadways. So just seeking the execution of this task order or the inspection. It's out of regularly budgeted funds for road preservation.
Just one question, Nick, do we typically, how much do we typically use when it's a not to exceed?
Uh, much of that depends on the contractor.
Okay.
If we can get a responsive contractor, uh, we don't use, maybe only use seventy-five percent of that. We've had times that contractors require a lot more oversight and supervision, such as last year's contract that's still not closed out, we're still in debate and discussions. And the more that takes, the more hours they have to log on the project. We've had projects in the past that close out without liquidated damages and without any issues. And we've used seventy-five percent of it or less. That's the little bit environment, we continue to try to, we do, we tweak our, our specifications every year to try to eliminate these issues with contractors. But seems to be frequently we find new issues that come up with these contractors that, that try to find a way to, um, spread their work out, spread their workforce out. They have shortages of workforce as well, so it just depends on it on an annual basis who we get.
Okay, any further questions? Looking for a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you. Uh, next up again, Nick, our annual highway report.
Um, so annually, I come to this board and the county council to share what we've done in the past year and what's kind of coming up in the next year. I've challenged to get this information out to the public in various different methods, so getting it to the guys that execute all the contracts. Scott being new, it'd be good to see some of what we've done last year. But in general, we give this report, I'm gonna talk about it with our, our staff before we bring it here. Try to pare it down a little bit, we get a lot more of the details when we talk about it as a staff. So, I want to take all your time, I think it's good to talk about what we got going on with the highway department. But our vision is still consistent with what it has been the last several years. We're trying to get everybody to their destination safely and we make all those decisions. Everything you're gonna see in here is about, is back tied to what we do. So, and we know that our roads that are in good shape have less, have less safety issues, less crashes. We also know that where we have visibility issues, there's higher probability of crashes. So you can see some of our roadwork here, just various different things that we do throughout the year. On our paved net, paved network of roadways added in the last few years, the herbicide, work that we do, that was our number one issue for several years was the, the amount of vegetation that grows along roadways. And we were also saying those were big safety issues as well as convenience issues for anybody using the road where trees are growing into the roadway. So road projects, what we did last year, these are done by contractors. Much of this is all determined by our, our assets inventory that we do every spring. Our Pazer road network, or we do our Pazer evaluation on our entire road network. So you can see the various different treatments we did on various different roadways of our, about four hundred fourteen miles of roads that we maintain that are paved. Work on our bridges, uh, this has been a, a new issue, I think, that we were never able to address without, without enough funding to do it. In the, you know, previous years, uh, go back, you know, I've been here twenty years, we're pretty close to twenty years. We were able to replace one bridge, you know, every few years, that's all the money we had and the capabilities we had with revenue that was available. So we found ways to try to prolong our bridges the best we could with our own staff and washing the bridges. And we've increased that substantially because we've seen the, the benefit of it. We added deck ceiling this year, we've done additional preventative maintenance on our structures. So all of our bridges get inspected every two years. Bridges in poor condition get inspected every year. But we, we take that and do something with that information. So we take our inspection records and do the work that is, is listed in there. And we've also seen that this is our major expense. We haven't been doing preventative maintenance, we haven't been able to do rehabilitation projects. The replacements cost a lot more, so being able to extend the life of these bridges. It's very similar to what we do with roads, we wanna surface seal them when it's a lot less expensive to do it, take care of them before they start deteriorating and then need replaced. So we're, we're kind of mirroring the same thing, except roads get in bad condition within a couple of years, three or four years, maybe ten years. Bridges are expected to last a hundred years, so you may not see the benefits for, for twenty or twenty-five years where you're extending the life of the bridge decks. Funding in 2024, um, we were awarded federal funds, bridge project on 300 South, between 875 East and 950 East, uh, or 975 East. These federal funds are eighty-twenty, so we pay twenty percent of the cost of replacement. As you can see on this bridge here, it looks like it's not that big, but it, it continues to have the issues in the channel. It's got scour issues underneath the footings, which have caused it to be, uh, on a high risk for scour and concerns it's on a twelve-month inspection cycle. Also awarded funding in twenty-four federal funds for another bridge, uh, Bridge 162, which is on 500 South. You can see there on the map, I've got, it's kind of in the center of the county, straight south on 500 South. So, uh, another one that's eighty-twenty, uh, this one is only eighty percent funded for the two phases, construction and construction engineering is what it's called. We funded the hundred percent local with design and rightaway phases, uh, where the other bridge was funded, all four phases at eighty-twenty. We were also awarded community crossing dollars for Bridge, uh, this one is Bridge 17 on Colfax Blacktop or 1075 West. This was one of those, we were doing the deck, uh, it was built in nineteen seventy-seven, I think. And we hadn't done any work on it, but trying to extend the life, that's, that's a very expensive bridge over Sugar Creek, just north of forty-seven. We did some additional work on the beams to extend the life of the bridge, reduce our, our future costs on that, on that project. Bridge nineteen, it's just up the road from Bridge seventeen, also on 1075 West. This one had additional problems in the channel, but we were awarded community crossings, uh, funding, which is state dollars, and they fund construction of those projects fifty-fifty. We're also awarded, uh, the Sacagawea projects in 2024. I referenced a little bit ago with our resurfacing project and full-up reclamation, another one point one million dollars. So this is community crossings again, so it's state dollars, separate application process, kind of separate requirements, um, but a much quicker timeline to get to construction than federal dollars. Don't need to read all these, but we had a significant number of projects get completed in 2024. I think I got a map on the next page, but the Bridge 192 picture, I wanted to talk about it a little bit. The additional width, you can see that, that's County Road 300 South. That's the same stream that runs under Bridge 401 that we were recently awarded funding. We're building the bridge for the future corridor. This corridor continues to be highly traveled. And as the expansion from Hamilton County comes into Boone County and across 421, we're not anticipating the construction of an entire corridor in the near future, but we anticipate this bridge to last a hundred years. And there's likelihood that that corridor gets expanded in that timeframe. And reducing the future cost, uh, was something we considered when we were building that bridge at this point. So the additional width is for a future corridor, still remains a two-lane road. So there's a map of where all those projects that were on the last slide that we completed in 2024, scattered around various locations throughout the county. We also completed a monument, this Bridge 41, uh, project, which is on 200 East, up by Clinton County line, it's right at the county line. This bridge was on the National Register of Historic Places, was a stone arch bridge and was beyond any kind of repair that would have put it back in its existing condition and made it functional for the people that are trying to use it. Part of our commitments, uh, was building this monument, which we didn't really have the design, but our staff was able to work with, uh, some individuals that put together the stones from the existing bridge. Our staff built the, the foundation and then worked with the, um, Historical Society to get the plaque there, what it needed to say on it. You get a chance to go check it out, um, it looks, it's a real good-looking monument for that bridge and we put it where you can see the bridge in the background, so anybody wants to come up and see it, it's all been, uh, with a monument there for memory that we committed to originally. Uh, road safety projects, this is one I wanted to talk about a little bit. I know this, we talk about road safety, but what we've done in our local road safety plan is we look at the crash data on an annual basis. And one that came up several years ago, uh, this wasn't all me, Craig Parks here before I was, that, that looked into a lot of these issues and our major hotspots, these two issues on 96th Street, two different segments of it. We did a curb correction on the Moore Road section of it and were able to put high friction surface treatment down. And the other section at 96th and Ford, we did a similar situation, we did it a few years later, a little different design, did it during a paving project, much reduced cost. But in those five years, there were seventy-five crashes between those two curves. And after our two projects were completed, a total between those two curves in a three-year, uh, four-year span was three crashes total. So we've seen a, a major improvement. There was utility poles that were frequently hit, knocking out the power to the residents. We see a lot of car parts, there's a lot of signs, there was a constant need for, um, for public safety at tho- those intersections. And we went back and looked at, you know, did this work and can we, you know, do this other curves and other locations throughout the county to prevent these issues from occurring? That project and many other projects, I talked about up at Local Technical Assistance Program Forum a couple of years ago. And there was somebody from Federal Highway in the audience and that's how I ended up getting invited to go to the, the federal, the National Sec- Center for Rural Road Safety, forum that we had. And it was a, a good experience, there was a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds and I wasn't really sure what my role or why I was even invited to attend. But after I got there, there was a, a lot of detail they wanted to gather of how we can use these five elements to, to increase road safety and reduce the deaths and injuries on, uh, on our public roadways resulting from traffic crashes. And this was their purpose, uh, to, to, to create the, you know, the, to change the, the patterns of what motorists are doing or anybody that's using the rightway and how we can create those actionable implemental strategies. And I was able to share a lot of what we had done, I was able to learn a lot on what some others had done and what we could possibly do in the future. Some of those action items that I took away, there was a lot of discussion about our, and what we did here was off-road vehicles, there's a lot of rural counties that have the same concern with mixing, you know, big trucks and motor vehicles with off-road vehicles or ATVs. And, you know, what we do here is, you know, what has been allowed in Indiana and our local ordinance and some of the concerns we had in it, with it. But in our case, you know, what we found by talking to a lot of those folks is that people that off, operate off-road vehicles don't use typical, um, turn signals and safety equipment while they're on trail and then they turn it on roadway. And some of those, how can we bring that to those people? Well, we see them when we get a permit, they come to the highway department to get a permit. Could we help share that information with them about operating those on a public roadway safely? Things they probably don't think about frequently, but they don't have near the safety equipment of a vehicle and they're now out on the same roads as semis and other, um, other motorists that are, that may not be aware of them and may not see them with a much heavier vehicle, that, it could be a very bad conflict. The other ones, update the local road safety plan. We didn't, I don't know that we did or didn't, but all elements of the safety systems, we're also getting that post-crash care, getting our health departments involved, finding a way to get outreach to a lot of the new drivers, uh, things that highway department's not necessarily suited for. And then getting more people involved in our local road safety plan update. And getting social media for the highway department, that's one of the things that I kept picking up was, you know, how do we get motorists to drive slower if they haven't had a expectation of the same amount of time they would get to, to their destination every day? Well, we frequently go out and close roads or we have construction sites and we can't put up a portable message board on every road that we're working on, we do have some of those. But being able to send that out, another way to get the message out to a road user in advance of that road closure, so they knew to leave earlier to take a different route the days they were gonna be out there working on the roadway they take to get to their destination. One of the things that occurred to me that I, you know, I'm from Boone County, Indiana, and we have these federal departments and a lot of these state departments represented at this forum. And, you know, if you think of your circle influences, the people at the department, you know, your family, people you're close to, but after talking to those folks, the circle of influence for all of us is a lot larger. We can all make a difference in how everybody uses the rightway, whether it's the person that doesn't want to drive, they walk or ride their bike, how they can interact with motorists and being the rightway safer or how we can share with our family members or our loved ones or anybody else how they could even use public transportation, uh, locally to, to get to their destination if there was some need to get around and they didn't feel safe driving. So I think we all have a larger cir- circle of influence than we, we originally anticipate. Road builders, so back to our department, uh, this is a program that's, that's put on by Local Technical Assistance Program, which is what that stands for. They, they offer training courses, we have additional, two guys that met the criteria, additional credit hours. Had to go through those twelve core courses. This is something, we've had a lot of guys come through the department that have taken these courses and then we've had a lot of people retire and take all that education with them. So trying to get additional people trained on all of these topics. There's no college course for working at a highway department. This is the best thing that we have found, to be able to get some kind of standardized method to get our training to our staff. Mental attitude award winner for 2024 was Justin Twitty. He met all the criteria, this is something I bring every year, want to make sure I point out that, that we do this on an annual basis. He's always ready to come to work, uh, doesn't matter what it is, even when he's coming to work on the weekends. Just happy to do the job and, and one of the great employee. Safety award for 2024 was Corey Moss. He, he brought all kinds of ideas on how we can ensure safer job sites. He works in a variety of roles at the highway department. It was well deserved, we had a couple of perfect attendance award winners. Ernie Kemp and Matt Schaller, that meant they did not come in late, they didn't take any days off without a twenty-four hour notice. That's one of those, it's hard to schedule and do work when we don't have the people there or they're showing up last minute or, 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 or calling us last minute to not, to let us know they're not gonna make it in. So paved roads in, in 2024, this is a condition ratings, we do this on an annual basis. You see we've maintained about a six point eight the last few years. Continue to have really good paved roads. This is one of those, um, hot topics, well, we don't have, you know, could pave more roads. Well, we absolutely need to pave more roads, if that's what, people want the road to be paved, we've gotta maintain our blacktop roads in good shape, so we've been on a lot of surface treatments, a lot of those road preservation treatments that I was talking about earlier, to keep our roads in good shape. Work orders, we track this on, um, as any, any work order comes in, whether it's somebody from our staff notices something or someone from the public calls or emails, it lets us know there's an issue. We have about three hundred and forty-six of those, we did have a, a data loss, we don't have a hundred percent this year, knowing what we had, we, those were tracked on that, uh, one of those drives that was lost. But over the time, you can see we've had a reduction in work orders. This year, it's kind of not exact because of the loss, but you can tell we've still had a very little number of work orders since 2017 when we started tracking these. And what that's done is it's changed a, a couple of items to being proactive. So our, our drainage, you can see stayed, stayed pretty low and there's been an increase in 2024 because we had a reduction in the reactive measures of looking into the calls for service. We've been able to go do an analysis on some of these roads that we plan to resurface in the next few years or that are high scoring in our conversion program and try to go find the issues before they become someone that's called in for a concern. So as we found those issues, we've made those into work orders, get them in the pipeline, to get them as part of the planning process. We continue to see a reduction in the overall work orders and that's been the only one that was an increase in 24. So 2025, some of our projects, they're not gonna read through those, but a variety of different road preservation treatments as well as bridge deck ceiling, we're increasing that for 2025. We've increased the, the budgeted amount for, uh, bridge preservation due to being able to use ARP funds and bond funds to do replacements and do, um, small structures, we've been able to increase the, the preservation lines that we anticipate to do more of that on our bridges. So 2025, you don't need to read all that, we'll get that on the next page. But in general, we have some bridges, bridge replacement, bridge rehabilitation projects that we intend to do as well as those small structures, those were ARP funded projects. So there's a map that helps a little bit better instead of just a bunch of list of roads or a bunch of bridges. So that's where we plan to be doing actual construction, uh, anticipated in 2025 for different projects that we have going on. And also a project that starts, should be starting here this week, uh, they're already off market locates, you know, identifying the utilities, but there's about thirty-five hundred signs that are gonna get replaced, this was a federal aid project. We had submitted as part of our local road safety plan, it was included in there that this helps bring motorists attention to our major, um, crash type, which is leaving the road or leaving their lane. So we, we immediately submitted for getting a lot of these signs replaced because they're in poor condition. And you can see there, they're scattered all over, places mainly stop yield and speed limit signs and then any yellow sign that has black print on it, some curb signs, directional signs. And after it got awarded, or after the bids were open, NDOT agreed to cover with federal funds a hundred percent of the construction phase. So the only part we had to pay, uh, ten percent of was, was the design and after construction inspection, uh, they covered a hundred percent of the cost for the federal funds. So these are projects, additional projects in development, a variety of funding sources. Some will be local funds, some will be bond funds, some will be community crossings, some will be federal aid. And right now, there's, uh, four bridges on there that are being funded with ARP funds for the design phase. So, again, a lot of projects on a map, I'm giving you a lot of information. I just want to give you a, have a picture of where that's, where that's all occurring right now. Additional work that's happening in Boone County, I wanted to share this at this stage. I caught a couple of drainage board members before they were leaving. So we've been notified because they're gonna need permits to work in the rightway of these water lines, projects that are somewhere in development. The blue line on the map there, kind of south and west of Lebanon or straight south of Lebanon and west is a thirty-six inch water line that is, uh, is being planned to connect to Lebanon's network. Where the green and the blue line meet, there's about two hundred east and two fifty south. These are all kind of preliminary, at this point, we don't have any, uh, final plans, but this is what's been shared with us and asked for our feedback regarding the permitting process and some of our concerns where they cross roadways. It's our understanding they intend to acquire easements from the landowners to put this water line in. The green line, it's down at the bottom, uh, kind of comes from the sixty-five and fifty-two area, south part of the county, that's a Citizens Energy Group, which is what CEG stands for. That would be bringing the water to feed into that line that Lebanon Utilities has. We don't have any control of any of these things, these are things that are being brought to our attention and requested what the requirements are for permitting, but that would only be in the rightway. So these routes are identified by the utility owners, uh, not by us. Their intent is to get easements from landowners. Our concern is that work being done in the rightway and its impact to roadways. Share this information with Carol, impact to legal drains. We're talking about huge water lines, gonna be buried fairly. We're talking about huge water lines, going to be buried fairly deep, it's going to be major impact if we ever had to relocate it as part of a project. The other two lines that are drawn kind of to the, you know, along 32 is where that purple line is, and then 400 east is where the orange line heads south off of 32. Those are future phases. Not sure with the timeline of construction, I suppose some of these routes could change throughout, you know, as they go through getting more detailed plans, but that's all to bring additional water to the city of Lebanon. Just wanted to share with you guys at this point that some of that, the green and the blue line could start moving through the process this year as early as the summer with permitting. So not sure what level of involvement anybody wants to have in any of these conversations, but wanted to bring it to your attention. Additional work in Boone County, this one's been brought to our attention, another, this is Project Foundry, so the Lilly project that's going to be proposed at 32 and 200 West, going to be all annexed into the city. The process will be similar to what they did on the project that's under construction now, Lilly. So the city will be the one providing the approvals and requirements. All that blue area that you see is in the city limits, has already been annexed in. The area that's not in the blue area is in the county control. So you see those roads kind of on the fringe to the south would be still roads that we would maintain. The reason I have this on the map for the most part is the concern, the impact to the residents, and similar to what we ran into on the Lilly project up north. However, this one does have state road access on one side of it. The impact to 200 West, Mount Zion Road, 50 South could be, you know, some impact. The Bridge 93 was my biggest concern. I brought it to you guys before, brought it to this board with concerns. This is taking a picture, looking at the intersection, so the Lilly project would be kind of to the left there going up that 200 West. It's actually looking north, not looking south like that label, but looking to the east on Mount Zion Road, and that bridge is right at the intersection, and the road has had a pretty steep angle. And you can see the barrels and the concrete barricades that we had in place. Once cold storage got built and that, the business park got developed, 200 West then became a shorter route than Enterprise Boulevard. So the trucks would frequently use 200 West, we've got signs, we've tried to deflect trucks from going down there, but they'll get actually stuck on top of that guardrail. They ripped the guardrail off of the bridge deck a few times. We've replaced it at least five or six times. We went to these concrete barricades because it was getting replaced so frequently. So we add additional traffic, or add additional traffic generator on 200 South. We have concerns of what that might look like. We brought those concerns to project reps, Lilly representatives, to just get out in front of it now and let everybody know that I want to let you guys know that we're not just doing nothing. We don't really have a lot of control, but we are providing information. One of the solutions was, well, let's just stop anybody from going down to that bridge and put a cul-de-sac on 200 West, which solves our problem, right? It covers the bridge, we don't have to worry about a bridge. If that guardrail gets ripped off, we'd have to close that bridge anyway, but it does make an impact on the people that live out there that you can see that are obviously not in the blue area, that are still not in the annexed area. They could, that could be a negative impact to them. Maybe that's the route they want to take. Public safety may have to weigh in on whether that's a good solution for a project that's going to generate 2,000 or 3,000 cars a day for construction, probably 500 or 600 cars a day once it's built. That could still be a negative impact to have a cul-de-sac for only one access point for public safety to get in and out and the residents that live in the area. So I see it comes with challenges. Another solution that's been discussed at this point is making a connection over to 50 South and then terminating the connection to 200, for 200 to make it all the way down to Mount Zion Road. That might be the more, you know, easier way to get another route for public safety and the motorists to get out, but then that road, that section of 50 South is a gravel road. So we'd still run into the same situation we have now around the Lilly site where, in spite of the amount of road improvements that we may try to get done with the project, motorists don't like to wait. And anytime there's a delay and the phone or the app says, "Turn right," they turn right, it's five minutes shorter. So if there's a delay at 65 and 32, or there's a delay at 32 and 200 West, there's going to be motorists finding another route out. And that's been the concern with the people that live around the Lilly site. We still have a gravel road that's another half mile north of the Lilly site that's currently under construction. Once anybody leaves their site, no developer or no contractor really has control of where their workers travel, of where their deliveries come from. They take the shortest route and the fastest route. So these are being discussed, of possible solutions. In my report, I want to make sure I get with somebody to come along with this to help formulate what we really want out of this and what impacts it's going to have, because no matter what we do, there's going to be people that get impacted by this project that are not part of the city. So additional work is proposed in Boone County, small structure and bridge projects. So this is what we know about right now. We've been trying to coordinate with NDOT, they've had a lot of staff turnover. They've let these projects work construction, so it's our understanding they're going to happen sometime this construction season. However, I suppose their schedules could shift, but you can see that I've got them labeled there. The blue lines are the unofficial local detours, which are not the official detour. Their detours take only state roads, which could be a very long route around, and in many cases don't always get used by the motorists. But there is significant impact to our projects, our county roads, when an NDOT road closes. So you can see there's a couple on 421, one on 47, one on 267, and one on State Road 75, various projects coming. Don't know exact closure dates. The one on 75, we try to get them to coordinate with the schools, try to do that project while school is out, because Western Boone Schools runs all their buses down 75, and it's been a regular closure for the last five or six years. They close somewhere between the high school and one of their elementaries, and it has a pretty significant impact because then they run all of their buses down those county roads to get around and extends their time. So additional coordination is expected, we'll let you know as soon as we know when they're actually going to close these. So that's our mission, is to eliminate the fatal and serious injuries resulting from traffic crashes, and make those decisions based on our ability to reach zero deaths on Boone County's transportation system. Shorten that up, we just say try to get everybody home safe. Makes it a lot easier, a lot less words, same process that we're after. So is there any questions or anything with that?
Not necessarily questions, but a couple comments on some of the things you highlighted. First, on the water lines. Do we know, are they proposing to locate their easements outside of proposed right-aways per our thoroughfare plan, or do we know that kind of detail yet?
So that depends on which one you're talking about. The line in the blue, a consultant that's working on that is working for Lebanon Utilities, so very local, similar consultant we work with on various projects, and we have been very much engaged in those conversations. Can we get this easement located out of right-of-way, outside of proposed right-of-way? That is the intent, that they are taking our advice on that to try to get, it still has an impact to the landowner, right? So it's still going to impact those landowners. It doesn't protect the right-of-way, so if we ever have to expand a road, do a drainage project, do a ditch project, anything, we won't have to pay to relocate that. Once an easement is acquired by that utility, if a local public agency does a project, they're responsible for the relocation costs. So we are trying to get that out of right-of-way to prevent that from being a taxpayer cost or relocate that in the future. The green line, the Citizens Energy Group, I don't know the consultants, I don't know as much about that project. Their intent is to be in an easement. Where we have documented right-of-way versus assumed right-of-way, that's where we're trying to get them outside of it as far as we can, go outside of utility poles. If there is right-of-way, stay out of right-of-way to protect future projects and protect taxpayers in future projects. It'd be very expensive to relocate 36-inch water.
So at this point, you don't really have, we don't, for the most part, we don't know that kind of detail, it sounds like?
Correct. My understanding is Lebanon Utilities line, they're further along with, toward reaching out to property owners, but we have brought those concerns up. With Citizens Energy Group, I don't have as much information on where they are in that process.
On the, I think it was 200 West, the one that... Yeah. I guess I would just, kind of a lessons learned that I've tried to pass on to people from the Whit Road project. I don't know if the plan, I assume the plan is to kind of do all the widening on one side of the road. You and I have had conversations about this. It would have been a lot easier for them if they would have taken like the east side of the road and just shifted it over 10 feet, because then they can do whatever they needed to do without having to bother those property owners.
That's the intent of this project, our understanding is all the widening would be on, in this case, the west side of the roadway. That's our understanding. There is one little spot you can see that is just south of the box that says Project Foundry, that is our understanding is not controlled by the IBC. So it comes back to a similar situation we ran into on the project up north. We have road improvements that would then not exist where this site is, or how does that affect us? There again, this is not, we don't have, our planning commission doesn't have any of the authority to make control or strings attached to these improvements that would be required. So it's similar to the project up there, we got a lot of widening to this, or why we don't have a lot of authority over it. So yes, it's a concern, it's one, I want somebody to go along with me, meet with whoever we can from project, from developers, the city, to address some of these issues, prevent it from being a repeat.
Then in your 2025 proposed projects, I maybe just missed it, but did you list the road conversion miles?
I did not list the road conversion miles. We have about four miles of roads we're converting in 2025. ARP funds contributed to making that a larger number. They were still working through the, are we able to get the right-of-way dedicated that we needed to? The highest-scoring road did not, we didn't have women dedicated, we actually have to relocate a utility line. RMC's poles are only 17 feet apart, we don't have enough room to make a blacktop road, and in order to move those poles, we'd have to have right-of-way, and we can't get right-of-way from individuals that aren't willing to dedicate the right-of-way. So moving down to the next roads on the list and work with those folks on their right-of-way dedications, and then planning to convert those four miles of road in 2025. You have questions?
Thanks, Nick.
Awesome report.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Moving on, staff report.
Well, I think we're at the items we added.
I'm sorry?
We're at the items that we added to the agenda. Which, the first one we added was to discuss and take necessary action on the legal services contract. Scott, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, or...
I'll wait, I'll work on it, and I'll probably do something at the next meeting.
Well, with that, before we move on to the insurance and compensation committee appointments, I would make a motion that we authorize the president to take necessary action on the legal services contract and personnel matters that were discussed at the executive session this morning.
For a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Staff reports.
Well, then we got the insurance, we got the insurance and compensation committee Scott, you made a lot of phone calls, but we heard a lot of comments that were made at the last meeting about including elected officials. I think Debbie in particular mentioned that, Debbie Ottinger. So I know Scott made a lot of phone calls. We were going to kind of split them up, but Scott handled most of them actually, so I don't know if you want to say anything else about the people that...
No, do you want me to name the insurance committee?
Sure.
Okay. After talking to the different elected officials, Tim Byers is going to be on the insurance committee, Councilman Aaron Williams, Councilman John Reiner, Councilman Dustin Plunkett, Recorder Debbie Ottinger, Auditor Debbie Crum, from the Sheriff's Department, Brittany Hicks, and Treasurer Nikki Baldwin.
And then the compensation committee, we're proposing Commissioner Scott Pell, Councilman Aaron Williams, Councilman John Reiner, Councilman Dustin Plunkett, Clerk Lisa Bruder, Sheriff Tony Harris, Prosecutor Kent Eastwood, Surveyor Carol Cunningham, and Coroner Justin Sparks.
Okay. Just a quick question on that. Did you consult with the council president on the council people who are proposing our appointing? Typically, the council president knows that.
Did we?
Consult?
I did, I did.
In the past, the council president is in charge of selecting who's on the committees.
Oh, is there respective?
Yes, so they choose from their seven members of who their appointments have been. That's what you've always done in the past.
Okay. I thought it was just our appointments for our board.
It's always been in consultation with the council president.
Well, I would make a motion that minus the council, proposed council members, that we appoint all the members named to the insurance and compensation committee.
Okay. Any second?
You're saying that everyone but the council is appointed to this?
Yeah. If that's...
We'll consult with the council president. Yeah, that's fine. Did you second Don?
No, I did not.
I'll second that. Any, take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Okay. Staff reports. Area Plan Commission, is anybody here, anything? Capital Investments and Facilities, Max Mendenhall. Doing ones, doing twas. Capital, or is it Health Department, Lecian, Abbey Messenger, anything? Highway Department, Nick? I don't think you spoke much today.
Got one item to consider for approval, the 400 east, 100 south intersection project. It's a federally funded project, and we are to the right-of-way acquisition phase of this project, and the appraisals have been done by the state and federal approved. They have to go through a certain process to do these appraisals and these types of appraisals, and they have been submitted. I sent them to you guys last week for review. There is a section on there that needs a signature from, I think it's from one, isn't it from one person, Bob? It's one individual signature from the county before they can actually be given to the landowners. So requesting that to be approved for execution, so we can then submit those offers to those landowners for their property.
I would suggest a motion to approve authorizing the president to sign on behalf of the committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
Only other item I was hopeful to get today was get someone from this board that is willing to attend meetings or a series of meetings about the, many projects in the LEAP, but specifically starting out about this 100 and 200 West, so we can get some kind of clear direction which way we would rather the project team move forward, whether that's in connections, not connections, cul-de-sacs, however that's going to work. I've talked to Tony from the Sheriff's Department, see, you know, what his take on it. If he wanted to attend, he was willing to give public safety perspective. I'm aware that LPD and LFD has also been in contact, Kevin Krulik, trying to organize to get all the people at the table to make whatever decision we can have moving forward for that 200 West project, but also there are bi-weekly calls about the LEAP district and different projects that they're pursuing, and they've requested to have a representative from this board attend those. So I don't know who would be willing to do that, or who wants to, who wants to sign up? So I don't know who would be willing to do that or who wants to, um, who wants to sign up for that commitment.
I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, is that work? Okay, I'll send, send you some kind of invite or get something on schedule when you're gonna be there. The only other items I mentioned in my report, we have that, uh, County White Sign Replacement Project starting. So there'll be a lot of vehicles and equipment, um, various parts of the county replacing signs. Uh, Locates called in all over the place, so we frequently get calls about, what are you guys doing out here? I got flags in my yard. So there's gonna be a lot of those all over the place with thirty-five liter signs getting replaced. And then Bridge eighty-four is also expected to start construction very soon, um, could be as early as the first of February. So that'll cost four hundred east from one hundred north to two fifty north to be closed. Uh, could be a ninety day closure for the replacement of that bridge.
Thank you, Nick. Human Resources, Megan here yet? Okay, IT Support, nothing. Elected officials. Any public comments of something we want to add to our agenda? That I'd like to ask if anybody has a. I'm sorry?
Someone online, somebody's online and is trying to speak.
Okay. Can you ask the question again? We couldn't hear you.
Yes, good morning. This is Councilman Aaron Williams. I see Mr. Clutter made a comment about the committee appointments. That those are typically advised on by the council president. I want to let, uh, you all know that that statement is grossly wrong and false and inaccurate. And that is not the case. As previously serving as the council vice president. The previous commissioners actually removed the former council president, Ken Hedges, without even speaking to him. Off of the prior two committees. As also being the previous head of the compensation committee. Was removed without any insight or direction from the council president. You as the commissioners have the full discretion to assign members of these committees at your own will. You can't talk to the council president, but these are appointments that are directly handled by the commissioners. So again, Mr. Clutter is grossly inaccurate in his statement. You do not have to seek consultation from the council president. And the council president cannot dictate who decides or cannot dictate whether who goes on these committees. So Mr. Clutter is wrong on. In his assessment of what he said and precedent was set when the commissioners removed the former council president, Ken Hedges, from committees. Just last year. So I want to go on the record, make sure that you both know that. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir. We'll look into it and see. See how that, how it plays out legally. So, uh, we'll do whatever the appropriate action is. Any other public comments? Mr. Santelli.
Thanks, Scott. Tom Santelli, eleven ninety-five Woodside Court, Zion City, Indiana. I've had a number of people ask about the fueling station and the, uh, estimated cost. And also, uh. The disclosure of putting that on hold. So I wanted to get your comments on that.
Okay. We're, we're waiting. We've tabled that for more information to come in. On what, if any penalties there's gonna be.
So, uh, yeah, I can fill in on that. So late, late yesterday, I had not had an opportunity to distribute it to you three and the council members, but. I got, uh, the number from Hagerman, who's the contractor. If you chose to terminate the agreement, uh, you'd have to reimburse them, I believe it's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And they've got all the supporting documents for that. And as I've told the commissioners before. That three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars would have to come out of County General. Because it, the bond funds can only be used for construction purposes. So. If they wanted to terminate that agreement at this point, that change order, then, uh, then they would have to go to the council. To get an additional appropriation for that amount.
Thank you. And then on the, uh, money that was allocated in that project for. The fueling station, what happens to that money, uh, if the contract's terminated?
It would just all stay in the, in the bond. So again, all of the, the one point nine million, whatever, whatever.
Four eight five three two.
One, yep. Scott's gotta memorize. All of that, uh, is coming out of the bond proceeds.
And?
And that can only be used for construction.
So, and that's construction at the jail for this specific project or can it be reallocated?
It can only be reallocated if it is within the scope and the project description in the bond. Which is for the construction improvement of the, of the jail and the jail facilities and ancillary. Things, parking lots and drainage and all of those types of things.
And has there a letter been sent to Hagerman to put the project on hold?
Yes.
And how was that executed?
Uh, I believe, I, I was for a copy. I believe it was an email from Commissioner Pell.
Right.
And was that discussed with the other commissioners before that was sent?
Not to my knowledge.
I just wanted to put a hold on everything until we could get more information. I felt like time was of the essence. To let, you know, get everybody being quite transparent. To let's stop and figure out what's going on and see where we are with the project.
Transparency is reviewing that with the other commissioners and making sure it's public information. My opinion. Uh, so I've had a number of people ask me about how that has transpired. And, uh, I know that. And, and for most commissioners, they're gonna review that, review it in a public meeting and then execute it. So that's, and, and that's the, the input coming to me. So I appreciate that information regarding that. And have you looked at the savings of having that right there? Uh, the fueling station in terms of people driving around and, and getting refueled and things like that?
Have we?
Looked at the savings of having the fuel station right there?
What is the savings?
Have you looked at it?
I, we've, yeah, we've looked at pricing the fuel and as far as a convenience factor. The only thing you're doing is driving, um, like a mile to the existing place we fueled for. I don't even know how long. I started in nineteen eighty-seven on the Sheriff's Department. We were fueling there then, so. Uh, I don't know how long before that, but we've, we've fueled a co-op as long as I know. So I don't know what the convenience factor, the deputies don't set at the jail. The deputies are out patrolling. So. I, I mean, honestly, where they get fuel should be central in the county, but it doesn't really matter. I don't think there's a convenience difference from nineteen oh five Indianapolis Avenue to. Co-op on the west side of town, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, and, and then do you have, what's the estimated fuel savings per year? Of having, you know, bringing tanker trucks into our fueling station?
Well, the, the estimates we get are wildly different.
Well, there's always a, a min, an average and a max to get that information.
I was told by, uh, two or three people, one guy owns a fuel station. Two people that deliver fuel say if you can save ten or fifteen cents a gallon. You're, you're doing pretty well. Most station owners will tell you they make money on the inside, not on the fuel, so. I just thought the savings, and you've got to catch that. On the, on the up and down swings of fuel prices being wildly different from, sometimes they may change ten or fifteen times in a day. So. I don't know what. We're not in the fuel business and I don't know who's gonna, who, in my opinion, I don't know who would be. Trying to get the fuel bids every time we needed it, how often we need it. Darn it, we forgot to order, the tanks ran out, that, you know. I think there's so many pitfalls to, I mean, I think you'd almost have to hire somebody full-time to manage the fuel. So, uh, I just thought that's just not an option. The sheriff is against it. He's made comments about it. Uh, I think like a lot of.
Where has that been publicly disclosed?
Yeah, I read a, I read a statement that he sent the other day. There's another email I think he sent. But that's not been read, but it's, he would rather see the money put into. A fund or whatever, set back for a year before we do anything with it. Just to see what else is gonna need, what kind of money is gonna need to be allocated to. Our sixty million dollar facility that we haven't opened and operated yet.
Have they moved from their trailers to the new offices yet?
They're still in the trailers.
Okay. Donnie, what's your estimate?
To answer your question about the, the, uh, fueling cost, what we look at is the basis. And that, that varies every day. In markets, everything on the open market varies. The information that I got came from Taylor Oil. The data from last year, from January all the way to November. Of what it costs them to purchase that by the transport load to bring into their facility. And then what it would cost to deliver it to us, whether it's me personally or anybody else in this room. The cost difference of that, of them storing it, loading it back in their truck and then delivering to us. Was an average of fifty-three cents a gallon more. So buying that by the transport load. On diesel is fifty-three cents a gallon cheaper. Buying gas that way is forty-seven dollars a cent cheaper. So you average that out, fifty cents a gallon cheaper to buy it by the transport load. Their thing is about the safety of this. If, if we ran out of power or something happens, and that's happened in the past, all gas stations are shut down. Uh, we have another crazy thing like happened in, in, uh, back when, when. We had the, the, uh, buildings taken down in New York. Could you get to any gas stations to fill up anything? No. These, this facility is only for county vehicles, period. All vehicles can be filled there. Everything is, is monitored. You know exactly how many gallons went into every vehicle. You know everything about that vehicle and that's all in the system. So nothing, no mistakes can be made with that. And it gives us more data on, on the usage of every vehicle and the conditions that every vehicle is in. So the savings there, right now we're at about two hundred and twenty thousand gallons per year. Take that times fifty cents. That's about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand, depending on what we're using. That goes, the savings on that every year. We have locked in fuel in the, in the past twelve years of what we've done and we've been successful at it. But then there's a few years that we were very unsuccessful because we look at those bids, we try to figure out the best time to lock them in. And a lot of times that's worked good, but there's been times where we ended up paying more than you would buy at the pump. And once you lock that in, it's there until you use those two hundred and twenty thousand gallons. So that can go into the next year because you cannot get out of that bid. You cannot get out of that contract that we signed. It is locked in. This gives us the ability to watch the markets, pay attention because there's only. We'll have a little over a month's worth of storage in, in that facility with those two tanks. Fifteen thousand gallons of, of, uh, gas, fifteen thousand gallons of diesel. We use more gas than, than, than diesel. Uh, without a doubt because of all the vehicles that we have, the majority of them are, are, are gas operated, not diesel, other than the trucks on, on the county, on the highway side. Those are all our tandems, all our big trucks are, are using diesel. So our, we, we will use slightly less and Max can tell me exactly the, the gallons difference on that. I can't tell you exactly what that is right now. But over the years, we have, it has cost us more money to lock that in than we saved. That can happen any year. We could, we could decide here in the next week or the next month to lock our prices in, it may be the best thing ever. Or things could change and that's where you're playing the market for the whole two hundred and twenty thousand gallons. Instead of buying it by the transport load. Whenever we would get low enough to, to look at that and Max would be monitoring that. Then we get bids from two or three different companies of what they'll deliver that fuel to us for.
And then where do those funds, uh, for the fuel come out of? Because the county's paying for that.
Yes.
Where do those funds come out?
It's in the budget.
Is that general funding? Fuel cost?
Um, so, depends on who's paying for it. But it is not budgeted for the fueling station.
And where would that come out of, uh, for the fueling station? It would be split again depending on who's utilizing it?
I don't, that's not been discussed with. With the auditorium.
But it's in the budget, correct?
No, not for the fueling station. The only fuel that's budgeted is what they're currently using.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, that's what you lock in for the whole year. So that money is set aside. It has to be.
Right.
I'm not sure how you would budget if you're. Doing it monthly.
You look, you, you look at the gallons that you use throughout the year and we know exactly how many gallons are used every month. And that's how you look at that. So when the, when it comes down to only seven thousand gallons left in one of those tanks, that's when we look at ordering another, another load of fuel. We pay every month, right now, we pay every month for the fuel that's used.
And that's budgeted and it comes out of.
County General, PSL, it just depends on who's using it.
Yeah. And it, but they're taxpayer dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have for right now, but thanks for your help.
Yeah, just real quick, Tom, there's a lot of data, um, you know, Donnie talked about fifty-three cents a gallon. That's one piece of data. That was for diesel from Taylor Oil. The average for gas from Taylor Oil was forty-eight cents a gallon.
I said forty-nine, forty-seven, sorry, I was off on that.
We have, uh, data from another vendor that suggests twenty-two cents a gallon. You know, even Taylor's data is as low as about thirty cents a gallon. So there's just a lot of data of one piece we just got ten minutes ago this morning to, to, to consider. You know, we just want to make sure that whatever decision is made is the right, is the right decision.
So what you've told me is there's a savings there. We just don't know how much it is.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I, I, in the last meeting, I kind of went, so based on the, the vendor Tuesday's data. Of the twenty-two cents a gallon, it's about forty, I think forty-eight thousand, forty-something thousand a year. And, you know, it would take about fifty, uh, over fifty years to realize a. A savings. Even with the, the Taylor Oil's data, we're looking at twenty-one years. Twenty-one, or yeah, twenty-one-ish years. When you, when you factor in all the costs and you, you know, you gotta project something for a maintenance cost, but. The fifteen years was based on. That, that's been quoted most often. It's been said as little as eleven years. But the fifteen years, which has been quoted most often, is based on a hundred and thirty thousand gallons per, or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. Based on the Taylor Oil, Taylor Oil data that Donnie's referencing, we would see a savings of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. And, and also the fifteen years was only based on the one point nine million dollar construction cost, not the design, not any ongoing costs. So. It, it, it's, there's a lot of data and information to digest and that's what we're trying to do.
But you have a pretty good initial cut that to cancel the contract would be three hundred and thousand, uh, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
Thirty-five.
Three thirty-five.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll look into that. You know, I've been looking into it myself and I'm not prepared to release anything at this point, but, um, we'll look into that.
I think the other thing you need to look at is what, what does private business do? Look at all the construction companies around here. What do farmers do? They, if they have the ability, they have the storage, they buy it by the transport load.
Yeah, that was one of my questions is, you know, if, if you're in the farming business. Yeah, that was one of my questions, is, you know, if, if you're in the farming business, I know a lot of farms have fueling right there.
I have 30 years of experience in this.
Well, and my, my concern is, is that all this work is going on, but it hasn't been disclosed. And today it has. So I, I think the people that talk with me have expressed a concern about transparency. So that's my comments. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
To go back just a, just a second. Go ahead, go ahead.
John Ryder, this is a, first off, it's just a citizen. I buy a load by fuel, and it's 25 to 30 cents a best. And is the county gonna buy futures, or how are they gonna market this? Because the market fluctuates up and down all the time. I have advantage on farm, as we buy like three transports a load. But you can wait three or four months. Like right now, we're really low. I'll buy fuel between now and spring. Number one, as a citizen, this was done at the end of the year, correct?
Yes, it was.
There wasn't any, I think we've done really quick without anybody else knowing about it.
We'd been working on it for the whole year. The bids have come in, we've had that for more than six months.
Okay, now, I'll switch on as a councilman. The money for the jail bond is for the jail, nothing else. You were using the interest for the jail bond that's been collected, but that's still jail bond money. So how's the rest of the county gonna use the fueling station?
That was interest that we were paid. That cannot be used for anything else. That can only go back to the bond.
That's right. But how is the highway department gonna use the jail fueling station?
It is set up for all county vehicles.
I understand that, but it's still jail tax money. Now, see how we can mix the two of them. And then, and one of the things, say, if this was done at the very end of the month, how do they have 330-some thousand dollars worth of work in on this thing? When it was stopped? I mean, unless it was all done way ahead of time, I don't understand.
They did not do anything until the contract was signed.
And they got 330-some thousand dollars worth in two weeks then?
Are they just gonna set on that? Because they had locked in the cost for that six, eight months ago. And after the first of the year, that cost was, it was done and over with. We would not be able to do it for that 1.9 million. Because they'd locked in the cost of, of what the tanks were gonna be, the cost of plumbing, everything was there for that project. If we did not, if we waited till the first year, then that is gone, and then you have to get a, a rebid. And my estimate on that, and I'm no expert in this, is that it would be close to 2.5 million plus dollars to do the same thing. Just like every house you build, everything you do has gone up, and this would continue to go up.
I understand.
There were invoices paid and approved by the commissioners before the contract was signed and then, so.
I just wanted, something like this, to me, you still should have come back to the council. We're reallocating money, it's taxpayers' money. Because there was other things discussed about Justice Center. Tom, we talked about the juvenile center out there. We talked about putting the courtroom out there. We talked about a fuel station. But none of that was in the original plan. It was just something we talked about a little bit. And then all, once we come up in the December meeting, and the fuel station's been approved, contract signed, and we're in 300-some thousand dollars. On the fuel savings, you're 20, 25 cents. We buy, and I just don't like the idea of the county gonna play the fueling market. Because it's kind of like any kind of commodity, it can really get out of hand.
They can. And, and we're already paying, playing-
When you're budgeting, you know what your fuel's gonna cost. It might be high, it might be low. But I just, the commodity game is a wild game, you know, I know. But I just, the big, the big thing is about the money. What's gonna cost, what's gonna cost to pay off? Because like Scott brought it up, or anybody brought it up, gas stations don't make any money from the gas. They just don't. It's all insights. And a normal gas station will use 150 to 200,000 gallons a month. And we're talking 200,000 gallons in a year. So I would see how we'd never pay off, pay off. It's, it's just not, I don't see where it's a money maker. I think it's money loser.
I will get you more numbers from more companies, because obviously no one trusts what I've gotten so far. And I will get, I will get more numbers for you.
But we're buying the fuel for the highway department off the tank wagon right now. So there would be savings if they could take a transport in, which I fully support.
But then we've got to rebuild the whole system there, because that is not big enough. If you want that discount, you gotta take that 7,500 gallons.
Yeah, they need 12,000 gallon tank.
There's a cost to that. I already know what those costs would be.
It's just, I don't know, it just seems like we're getting into the gas station business, and just gonna have more maintenance, more... In other words, people that own gas stations have people to take care of all the IT, all the repair, any kind of maintenance that has to be done. Boone County doesn't have that.
We have a maintenance manager.
We're gonna throw it all on Max.
Yes, we will.
That's all I'm saying. That I, I just, I really question how it all happened, and how we got that much money involved, and where the money's coming from. I think it should have been-
Coming from the interest that we were paid on that 60,000.
That's still part of the jail bond, and the jail bond can only be used for the jail.
For construction owner.
Right, for the jail, not for the county highway, not for the-
Maintenance, anything out there. That was all part of it. That was all put in in the beginning.
I understand, but it's not used for the county highway. Or the, anybody, if, if, if you want to put one in just for the sheriff's department, that could be part of it. But any money coming out of that, jail bond has got to be used for the jail. If we got extra money coming, pay the bond down before we, before we do it.
So your suggestion is that we build the one for the-
No, my suggestion is we don't do it.
But you just said that sheriff's department have one, the highway has one.
If you have to have one for the sheriff's department, build one for sheriff's department. But I, I say no. That's my opinion. I think.
Any other public comment?
I'm Jay Lewis. I live on Sorrel Court, and I come simply as a Boone County citizen and taxpayer. When you consider building the fueling station, I would encourage you to build it. Just from a common sense approach, it seems to me that you, the county, has an opportunity to move up one link or remove one link in the supply chain. With the fueling station, you'll be buying fuel the same place that the retailer buys. As I understand the system that you're using now, you're getting bids from a retailer. And I would submit to you that what you're getting is a bid for volume discount at retail. But with a fueling station, you'll be buying the same place the retailer's buying. And it seems to me that that saves some money. It seems to me also that there are lots of fleet owners in this world who would love the opportunity to have their own fueling station for their fleet. But their fleet is scattered all over a region, state, or the country. They can't get their vehicles back to the same fueling station. Because your fleets, and you have two of them, are in the county. As you said, one central fueling station serves both fleets. So you've got an opportunity to save money for two, for two fleets with a new fueling station that you already start, the county has already started towards building. And I would encourage you, when you come to that point, that you vote for building the fueling station.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Anyone else? Before we get off this topic, go ahead, Nick.
Somebody was on there, there you go. Aaron was trying to talk, I think he turned it up.
Are you, have another comment?
I would, I would, I was just saying that I would like to know what the transparency process was on getting multiple bids for the design and destruction of the fueling station. So maybe Mr. Plummer can provide that, since he has so many, so much information on 300,000. Can we also get that as well, all time, much? With how much work was it laying, to actually figure out how many companies were used to build a $2 million station? Thank you.
Hagerman Construction? Hagerman should have all that, he's saying. We should be able to look into that. Is there anything else from you, Mr. Williams? I earlier said that Sheriff Harris had a comment on the station. And this is a, this is an email to the commissioners from yesterday. This, he couldn't be here today, so I want to read you what, what was sent to us. "All, I have been asked for my opinion over the last week, including calls up to today, on the county fuel station. That was currently up for consideration. I won't be able to be at the commissioners' meeting tomorrow, so I wanted to get, get it documented beforehand in my words. Number one, the justice, or the current Justice Center project is not completed yet. $2 million would go a long way on something that hasn't been or thought of when they originally designed the project. I would like to see that money be saved for a period of one year after administration is back in the building, in case something does come up. It's our understanding that in 2024, we locked in a price with co-op of $2.70 per gallon. Average price for 2024 for the, in the entire country was 330 a gallon, which shows that we saved money there." Or we saved money. There's... "There is one station for it, but it's certainly located in Lebanon, for those who aren't aware. I checked with people I know in the fuel business, and was told that if we were able to save 10 to 15 cents a gallon, we would really be doing something. Was the fuel station put out for bid? Could we save money there? Was maintenance or the possibility of a fuel spill taken into consideration?" I've said this, I'm not trying to be a pain. I do know, I can hear him reading this. I'm not trying to be a pain. I do know things come up after the fact in new construction, and I just think it would be, sir, fooling off at this point. I've said this before, but I want to make sure all of you know that you can always call me with any questions you have at any time, with anything involving the sheriff's department. Respectfully telling. So whether he's for or whether he's against, you read what we read. Sounded like he wants to hold. The other thing I, before we move on, and I just, if we have a 30 to 50-year savings, or, you know, starting to get payback or whatever on this, that the very best tanks we can buy are the 2087s, which you guys don't know what that is, but, and I probably wish I didn't. But they're the better tanks. They're double-walled, fire-resistant, and they last 30 years. They have, they're certified for 30 years. So those are, what, 280 or 7,000 dollars of the project. So before the project could even be paid off, we're gonna have to replace all the tanks anyway. So, anyway, is there any other public comment, or Ms. Lasly?
Jennifer Lasly, Boone County Assessor. I just had two things. As far as the insurance and the compensation study, nobody contacted me. In the future, I'd love to be contacted, possibly be involved in those things.
Sure.
And then, secondly, you're gonna be doing something with the legal contract. Is that going to be on the agenda, or would that be added that day?
It will probably-
I'd like to put some input on that.
Okay. What is that? As, as I move forward with that, or as we move forward with that, it'll probably be on the, the next agenda, I would suspect.
I just, I can't always get here, and then when you guys add things the day of-
Right.
You know, being in my office, doing my work, I can't-
Well, right now, we're a pretty fluid state.
I can't always get over here when it all happens.
Yeah, I wish we didn't ever have to do any amendments to the agenda, because it complicates things. But we'll table the fuel station until we get further data, or I, you know, that's my recommendation. We just got this information today. First we heard about it was sitting here from Mr. Clutter, so. I want to make the best informed decision, as well as the other two guys that forth the county.
Well, and I'm talking about the, the legal contract, something was mentioned earlier that you tabled, that you guys are gonna talk about later. Are you revisiting the contract or something?
That was in the amendment.
Oh yeah, well, we authorized Scott to take any necessary action on, on that.
So is that gonna be open for discussion for some, I mean, as the assessor, I do have to, I mean, my job changes constantly. The Department of Local Government Finance, I can contact them. There are things, at the end of every email I get, contact your local county official, or your attorney. So, I mean, I, I, there's times I've had to get ahold of Bob out of very late, you know, whim, trying to. So I just would like to be able to input. If, if you guys are considering changing council, all of us that do utilize the council, it'd be nice to have a little input.
Right. Okay.
So the, the motion was that, is that the president has the authority to move forward?
So no input from the, from, anyway?
That's up to him.
I can, I can call any, you know, try to answer any questions you have. But, you know, as this goes along, we're gonna try to find somebody in the next, what, 10 days or so. But if not, we'll go another month if we need to, but we'll try to find the best person we can.
So it's, it's already decided that you're changing? There's no, there's no-
We're gonna look into it.
Conversation.
We're gonna look into it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Hold on a second, we gotta turn the volume up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Judy Stewart, I'm going to agree with what Jennifer just asked. We need to be a lot more transparent with the people. And what she just said is correct. I don't feel like you guys, for people that do not know a lot about what happens in the government, you need to be a lot more transparent with these contracts. Just coming in here and saying, "We're gonna do this," and the people don't even know what you're agreeing to, is wrong. We need to get back on track, and we need to be transparent. We need to quit rushing this stuff through, and we need to take the time to review it. This is the taxpayers' money that you are spending. And we need to know that you are doing your due diligence. I'm very happy that a lot of this stuff is getting tabled today. Because these are a lot of big decisions with massive amounts of taxpayer money. And before decisions are made, things need to get reviewed, things need to be studied, and you guys need to determine, is this best for the county? I agree with Mr. Harris that why would we want to take on maintenance on fuel stations and possible fuel spills? I don't see the advantage to that. So I'm gonna agree with Jennifer, I think, and, and you guys, in what you're doing, tabling this. So, I'm gonna agree with Jennifer, I think, and, and you guys, in what you're doing, tabling this. And, let's get a little bit more in-depth on what you're spending money on. Who it is actually going to accommodate? Is it going to accommodate the corporations and the businesses that you are signing contracts with? Or is it going to benefit the people, the county, the city of Lebanon? I watched you guys last year, and for the last couple of years, push things through, and I don't even think you did what you were pushing through. You were just doing it because you were being pulled to do it. And that is not justice for we, the people. And that's all I'm gonna say on that, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we've got documents signing next.
Have we signed all of them?
Oh, we've got, oh, we didn't sign. Service agreement, uh, we've got a, that's dated for payment to GM Development, draw request number twenty-six for the construction of the jail. Amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents. For your approval.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same side?
And then, a batch of claims. Everybody wants to see those?
Move to approve the claims.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
You got, you got a motion in a second.
Or, all in favor for that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
Then for mail, the last thing on the agenda, you've got, uh, received a letter regarding the, uh, PUD proposal at four to seven sixty-five from Ted Baggy. You've got a, several notifications from IDAM, just routine, permanent renewals, and, uh, certificate of insurance for Citizens Energy Group for their insurance, and that's it.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?